I'm gonna call the annual The annual 2025 annual township meeting.
Stay over here.
Yeah.
Stay over here.
Yeah. Mr. Johnstone is gonna be our
How come we don't I'm not, I'm not, this is the third time, fourth time you've been doing this.
What do you wanna do?
No, I'm taking donate a flag so we can have a Huh?
We have something, I have to dig them out of the storage.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you everybody for attending. Okay. Okay. The annual meeting is a meeting of the residents of Casco Township and not the elected board. Any resident eighteen years or older may vote on the official salary to increase the people's state however, all any other matters discussed in the meeting are advisory and phone. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Johnstone for being here. My question. Okay, the first thing, the thing is to approve the agenda for the 2025 annual meeting.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support to approve the agenda. All in favors? Say by aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You guys have to vote.
Yeah, you guys have to vote.
I need a counter.
Yeah, we have, who's the youngest person in the room here?
That would be me.
Let's entrust this to Mr. Manning. He was willing and able.
Alright.
As soon as he give the sun out of his hair.
Okay, I'm good.
There you go.
Okay, the next, the next thing is to approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 annual meeting. Any questions on this?
Did he remember?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the minutes from the 2024 annual meeting.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the minutes for the March 12th, 2024 annual meeting. All in favor? Say by raising your hand.
Who's counting, Mr. Manning?
Oh, I have my own.
No, you gotta count it.
Somebody told me that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is elected official salary. A approved clerk salary resolution 2025-02 for fifty-three thousand dollars a year. Now, you could on this make a motion to accept the resolution as granted or increase the elected person's salary. But you cannot decrease it.
We can leave it the way it is.
Yes.
What's that?
Only the way it is.
You can do that. You can make a motion to that.
What am I motion for?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, you're saying?
Okay, to
To increase. To approve the increase.
Okay, well, either to keep it the same or if you approve to increase, you have to give an amount.
No. He's saying that one is the way.
I made a motion to approve the clerk's salary increased to fifty-three thousand. Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the clerk's salary at fifty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Do you have support for that motion?
I support.
Okay, Colleen, I think was the quick draw on that. So, okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the next one be approved treasurer's salary resolution 2025-03 for thirty-one thousand, sixty dollars a year.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's salary for thirty-one thousand, sixty dollars a year.
Okay, do we have support for that motion? Support. Okay, we have motion support to approve the treasurer's salary. I have thirty-one thousand, sixty dollars a year. Okay, all in favor? Say by raising your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, approve the treasurer's salary resolution 2025-04 for 2025-05 at eight hundred and forty-six dollars per year and per diem of eighty-two dollars. I wanna make a motion.
I make a motion to increase the salary per diem amount for both trustees due to the fact that Mr. Goldston has been a trustee for more years than I've been employed by the township. And he has never in the twenty, near twenty years that I've served his township asked or received an increase. And Mrs. Kozinski, in addition to her duties as the chair, the serving on the board, she is the liaison to the planning commission and she also very diligently and very effectively distributes all the packets to three of the other planning commission members. So I would move that that increase from eight hundred and forty-six dollars be increased to one thousand dollars.
I support. Okay, all in favor of increasing the pay salary of the
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen.
Yeah, I just wanna make a thing.
Can I, can I answer her? She's our representative for the road commission, bridge and what is it, the bridge advisory?
I forgot about it, thanks.
No, like I said, I was gonna say Dan here, he serves as one of my senior advisors here. And Gina represents me from time to time on different things that I can't attend. And she helps me out. She's doing a good job. Okay. Next one, approved supervisor's salary resolution 2025-06 twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars per year.
Could you give me that figure again?
Twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars a year.
That's with an increase?
No, that's, I haven't never, that's been, I've never asked for a raise.
That's, that's a thought. I make a motion to increase that to thirty-five thousand.
No.
No?
Well.
You wanna know?
No.
Oh.
I don't want no increase.
Oh, you don't want no increase?
No.
I do not. Leave it the way it is?
But you're putting in less than our
I don't wanna leave it the way it is.
You're fine with it?
I'm fine with that.
Make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion.
You're good with that then?
I'm good with that. Make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to accept the figure twenty thousand.
Five hundred and fifty-one dollars. All in favor?
Who's second?
Oh, that's for
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Quite a minute. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Okay, now the next one is any matters, concerns of residents. So you can bring up matters here that is concerning to you about activities in the township.
Could we get lines for the
I'd also like a flag to be hung.
That's a really, Joe. How many months of family? What's the problem though? Now, you said it in the comments.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the problem with the flag though? We've been here since it's been open. No, I'm just I'm going once.
No, we have
Which one you want? What kind you want?
We have a flag holder up there and a Michigan flag up there in store. I have to dig them out.
Joe, it's been four, three months.
Okay, we'll get that done, Mr. Manning.
If he had stayed, he could do that.
Alright, any other concerns?
Do we need a motion on the lines?
No.
No.
We'll research those and then we'll
Right.
Any other concerns?
He could almost face the other way.
Take tables and put them on apples.
Yeah. Then they can see.
Because we just put us over here and so then they can see the TV better too. With us right there.
To be fair, they take the TV out.
We did. Yeah. They noticed we're using it too.
Alright, if there's no other comments or concerns, we are up to adjournment for the annual meeting.
One more, oh, about roads. No, we're not there yet. This is a different meeting.
Oh, yeah. About roads?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, no, I've been, I talked to area foremen and they've been, now they have a stretch of good weather, they've been grading some of the roads. I've noticed they've been hitting some, some really bad spots.
Yeah.
Right on Church Road, fifty-four oh six. I just heard the craze. What?
Yeah. Well, there's, the one's, the problem with right now with graded roads, when the frost start to come out, it's gonna So what they do a lot this time of year is they'll hit different, bad, really bad spots. Because it's, like I said, this is always, when the frost is coming out of the ground, you know, they come and grade it and keeps warm until you're gonna have soup out there. So it's just that's You know, hopefully this thing's dry and frost comes out and dries it up and then they can really get some good some on grading the other roads. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, if not, we're up to adjournment for the annual meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion support for adjournment. All in favor, raise your hands.
On the count?
Count of two.
No.
Number forty.
Fifteen.
Okay, thank you for attending the annual meeting. Now we have the, the regular meeting for March 11th, 2025. Okay, we already had called the order, but the consent agreement already completed. Okay, we have the agenda, okay, this is just the board here. We have the agenda for March 11th, 2025 meeting. For the consent agenda, I should say.
Um, we need one addition, right?
Yeah. We have one addition, is Township Easter egg landing? Jane, there will be Jane. Okay, just that addition.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition. Support.
Okay, we have motion support, the consent agenda with the London addition. We'll vote.
You know what? Hold on a second, I think we needed to call this meeting to order. Cause we adjourned the last one.
That's right.
Okay.
So, we adjourned it at seven, where's my calendar? Seven twelve, I think, so I'll just say that.
Called the order.
Called it to order at seven twelve, sorry. Vote call vote. Anderson, yes?
Yes.
Kozinski, yes?
Steven, yes? Okay, citizens' comments?
What? Oh.
Yeah, we have citizens.
Wait a minute. The consent agenda. The executive there. I had, I had something I wanted to say about the
Oh, okay.
About the budget.
Sure.
Okay. I wanted to tell you that I have a little bit of good news. This budget states a few figures. A lot of figures, thank you for doing that.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do this during the budget hearing?
Alright, I can say my good news.
That's gonna be like one minute?
Yeah. Okay. So, alright, any citizens' comments? Okay, you have not yet in the meeting to discuss anything. Okay. Alright, bud, budget hearing. This is for the 2025-26 budget.
So you have to call the normal meeting? Or you have to adjourn the normal meeting?
Alright, thank, alright, like adjourned, um
So you have to make a, do we have to make a motion like we
You can make a motion to close.
Okay, I make a motion to close the, the normal meeting.
Okay, we need support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support, um, to close the, um, normal meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Colleen, would you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Alright, and we need to open up the, um, budget hearing. We have motion to open
I'll make a motion to open the budget hearing.
Do we have support for that?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support to open the budget hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Colleen?
So I'm looking at, um, the numbers here for current real property taxes and road knowledge. So Well, I just wanted to say, um, we just concluded this year's tax collection. And with adjustments to the budget, um, according to my figures, we took in, we are taking in two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars in road knowledge money.
For this upcoming year?
Mm-hmm, well, this is what we, I have collected.
Oh, for right now?
Right now. I have collected two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. So we have about ninety-three and a half thousand still coming from Dillon from Texas. So that's a little bit more than what this reflects, which is a good thing. And, um, that is township operating, I'm sorry, and the roads. Um, we were, we were, after the original road, had a little bit more after some adjustments that I made. Um, we are collecting two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars in road money. Nine and three thousand, nine thousand, three hundred is still out and we'll be getting that in the next month or so from the county. So that's up to
That's good.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good news. Okay, Jenny, one up?
Does anybody have questions? I did do the park and the liquor pump on that second sheet. Um, and I just, I didn't have like concrete numbers, so I just kinda estimated based on like what we, what we've done in the last couple of years and what hopefully we have planned for this coming up year. And if we need to adjust it, we need to adjust it.
No, you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Same thing for the liquor pump and the vacuum. I just, you know, that one's pretty straightforward because we get the, the revenue from the state and then we pay the council. And then I didn't change anything else. It was the same as it was last month. So if anybody had any questions or otherwise, should be good to go.
Any questions? Alright. Okay, I think, um, we're up to approve the 2020, we have to close the budget hearing for tonight. Okay, we need a motion to close the budget hearing?
I make that motion.
We have support?
Support.
We have motion support to close the budget hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, we need a motion to reopen the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
We have, a motion and support to reopen the regular meeting.
Dan, was it Dan?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We're up to approval of the 2025-26 budget. Okay, we need a motion to approve?
Comments, motions, please, project?
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the 2025-2026 budget. Vote call vote.
Anderson, yes?
Steven, yes.
Kozinski, yes?
Steven, yes?
Steven, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is the planner's contract from Casablanca. Our planner Karen Lebeer is only asking for a fifty-dollar increase per month for her consulting. She's up, um, some of the B schedules. But that, as I explained in my letter, that we can deal with that next month. Um, I think Karen is doing a great job. She has grown tremendously in the past year. And, um, I, I highly recommend that we reapprove her contract the coming year. I mean, she works well with the building, um, department. She always feels my calls. And I, I think she's, and she's gotten a lot of the townships around this area. So Southern St. Clair County is sort of like her domain, her specialty. And she, and whenever she meets consulting, she has one of the best that ever was in the business she could rely on, so.
Can I ask Brad's opinion just cause I don't have any, like, I don't have contact with Karen usually? Are Colleen thinking?
She and I work very well together. And if she, as Joe mentioned, if there's any question or any doubt in her mind that perhaps she's not quite out of all of this certain particular matter, she does rely on Mr. Cassin. But she and I work very well together and she has a very good rapport with the planning commission members. Mr. Johnstone is a member, and Gina, and I would say you would agree.
Yeah.
I would say she's extremely thorough.
So if we approve this, then we would adjust our B schedules personal with whatever she's increased on hers.
Yeah. I'll bring you up to the board next morning.
And you'll you'll bring a reason for the fee?
Yeah, yeah. She basically matched all the townships around here the same.
And there was a slight inadvertent far, far foe in that we overlooked the fact that if she has to do more than one site plan review, it only happened, what, three times? We did not let the applicants know that. And so rather than spring another plan review charge on them, we paid that. But she has now made, made reference on what you have in front of you, I believe, that those additional site plan reviews required and necessary, that cost will be passed on to the applicant. They were insufficient in their original site plan. And so the planning commission, with Karen's advice, required more information. And I think it was like one hundred dollars for these, these site plans that had to be reviewed. Were they personal homes or were they businesses? Businesses. Businesses, I believe. But we didn't wanna pass along the cost to the applicant that they weren't aware of. So it will be out of the B schedule now that any additional plan reviews are subject to whatever charge you get in front of you.
And they, when they are given the list for a site plan review, all items required for review, artists, there's no surprises?
No, it's in the application, exactly. In fact, I do charge a certain amount for each application when it's brought in upfront. But anything after that that she, she determines on that initial plan review is lacking, she does ask for additional information. So if it's a full, if it's another whole drawing, that would be applicable. Otherwise, she just does the review as a courtesy. Good? Thank you. Yeah.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the, um, contract. Is there a
Yeah, five hundred and fifty dollars per month.
Is it, is there a, is it on date though? Is it just for a year? Does it say?
Yeah, for one year.
For one year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot. Okay, so I'll make that motion to approve that.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the contract for Casablanca planning for one year and a cost of five hundred and fifty dollars per month for Karen. Okay, vote call vote.
Anderson, yes?
Yes.
Kozinski, yes?
Steven, yes? Okay, motion carries. Next one is lawn maintenance quotes. I sent out to about seven different landscapers, some local. One didn't respond to, one said they didn't do this area. Um, but I have three here. We have D E Landscaping, which is our current service. They have, they have a per cut cost for a hall is sixty-three dollars, which they do weekly. Cemetery, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. They do that every other week. That was our request. The park is a hundred and five dollars. Um, well, that would be expecting every week, cause we're just gonna be first time ever. And if we did a total, let's say for twenty-six weeks, normally that with their season would be six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have five-star lawn and snow for the hall, they would do it for seventy-five dollars per cut every week. The cemetery, a hundred and fifty dollars every week. They don't, they wouldn't consider doing because of their scheduling. A park, they would do for a hundred and fifty dollars per week. For a total for, um, a twenty-six week would be about eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We have Trio Outdoor Maintenance. They adjusted our snowplow this winter. They do the hall for fifty-five dollars per cut. They offer a seasonal rate for fourteen hundred and eighty-five dollars per season. For the cemetery, a hundred and forty dollars per cut or three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars per season. They would do that every week, like the hall and park. The park would be sixty-five dollars per cut or a seasonal cut of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars per season. So a total cost per season probably would be seven thousand, twenty dollars.
So that last one, the Trio Outdoor?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, do we have to go with the season or can we do a per cut?
We can do a per cut. They give us, they give us the option.
And then the cemetery, do we have to do that, like the second one, we have to do it every week? Do we have to do it every week?
I'm not sure. I'm sure all of them, I know the second one. He said he does it every week.
Cause we don't necessarily need the cemetery done every week, maybe every two weeks.
I can ask.
But can I make sure that it's done for Memorial Day, please?
Sure. Well, I can ask them and say, hey, we like it every other week.
Well, I'm just thinking because if we do, if we do Trio, it Trio looks like it's, it's cheaper all the way around.
It does.
Except the cemetery, but if we only do that every other week, then it would be
I could ask them. You know, he did our snowplow and if we're continuing to use him, he'd
The Trio?
Yeah.
So we were happy with this, though? For the most
Yeah, for the most part, although one on Valentine's Day, um, during the
Snow?
For the snowplow out here, he had the final day tax collection. There was that, um, he was delayed getting here and they had, it was a Friday. And they had some snow and we had some area residents who
Oh, that's when Telltows and Stover came down and did the parking lot. Send something to, to, uh, Telltow. A thank you note. And he bought his big machine. And the other guy bought up a little bit of machine, but they got the job done. But that was a lot of snow that day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we should thank Telltows for that.
Yeah. Okay.
So looking at this, I
So looking at this, I would say the middle one's out because that's outrageous. I don't know what you guys think, but I, if Trio does the cemetery every other week, I mean, I guess we could try him.
That would be fine. I have no problems with D E.
I, D E's, I do.
Lawn around here anymore.
The one thing I am a little bit concerned about Trio outdoor maintenance is that it's almost too low of cost sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trio is 30 pounds, 30 weeks.
Yeah.
Not just 26. I don't, I think that the terms of the Trio agreement seem pretty solid. I would move that we go with Trio at $7,020 a season.
For the still.
And then any adjustments, we can talk to them about that. I suspect they're willing to.
The cemetery every other week? Yeah, he's been pretty reasonable when I've read the article. Okay, so you're gonna, you're proposing the per-season cut depending on?
Yeah. If any adjustments that you can look for. I don't think that, I don't think that's going to require any.
Well, yeah, okay. All right. Can you kind of get them support for that motion?
So what was the motion? Sorry. Are we doing, it's Trio, right?
Yeah, Trio. And Amber's going with a season cut depending on if, like, all of us say, hey, we'd like to adjust it like the cemetery every other week. Say every week.
There's so many trees there. The grass doesn't grow up fast.
Yeah.
It doesn't.
Yeah. But it's also cemetery is labor-intensive because you have to, the weed from it will run, headstones and that, so. That's the thing about cutting the cemetery lawn. So, okay, we have support for Dan's motion.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support for Trio Outdoor Maintenance for our, for this season lawn cutting, our lawn maintenance, for a seasonal cut of rate of $7,020 depending on adjustments if I tell him, hey, we have to put the cemetery every other week.
So what if they say no? Do we still want to go with them?
Yeah, I would say so. Okay, we have a motion support. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Steven, yes.
Steven, yes.
Okay, motion. All right. Demolition permit. I'll leave this out. Okay. On this date, building official Kurt Singestat returned from inspection at Revendu Mobile Home Community. Upon his return, he stated that he had observed a mobile home being removed from the site and stated that a demolition permit should be required for mobile home removal prior to a new unit being placed. Katie, okay, Katie and I, we burn that little salad, indicated that there has not been any such permits required up to this time. We advise that the only issued demolition permits for any other demolitions such as rooms, barns, garages, and lot. Kurt advised that he would bring and talk to Mr. Painter, he's the administrator there at the community, to advise the demolition permits would not be required. We advised Kurt at the time that we only charged for one inspection, no other fees were charged, and that being the $125 administration fee is charged for all owner residential permits. Kurt had a conversation with Ed from EMHS Mobile Home Center at the park, and also with Roy Painter, the general manager of park operation, and they agreed that the permit would be appropriate for demolition. Treasurer Stover was the only elected official here at the time and was taking place. Since we had other official permission from the board to charge $125 administration fee, I discussed this matter with her and explained this situation at hand. She made the decision to allow us to charge $125 administrative fee for demolition of mobile home sites as well as $75 inspection fee already being charged for a total of $200 per. Okay, we just have to make this. Any questions on this?
We haven't been paying this up to now, is that true?
We've only been charging $75 and it hasn't been in place even that long. It's probably within the last year or a year and a half that we've been charged the $75 for demolitions.
And that really just involves moving the whole office site?
And any clearing off any concrete that might be, you know, from a slab that might need to be moved and replaced. And so to be consistent with all the other residential permits that we issue, the one, and they're going to be doing several. The gentleman was on his way here to pull the permits that didn't exist. We had to do something because he wouldn't have been able to do it without permission from.
The owners of the park are quite comfortable with this.
Yes, Mr. Painter is the general manager of the park and is the gentleman who sets all the mobile homes on the park.
And then there are reservations about all new fees and charges.
Right, yeah, and I, yes, I understand that. But to be consistent with the administration fee because to issue that permit is the same process that we do for every permit that's issued. So they were a agreement and county helped us in a kind of a sticky, wicked situation. But we want to get official approval from you as we always do.
Any questions about that, who in that trailer, their demolition, they carried down, put it in dumpsters, and all the way there, they hook it on and pull it?
I believe they probably put it on a trailer and just rolled out of there.
On the frame of the trailer, they put the wheels on?
I'd rather imagine this.
I mean, there's a difference between mobility, moving it off the park, the way it come in new, or demolition.
Yeah. Well, they have to inspect, yes, inspect the site about the electrical, the gas and stuff like that that's improperly.
Who's that?
What's that?
Who's the inspector, Kurt?
Yeah, our building official.
Does he have, don't you think you must have a mechanical engineer inspector, homing guy, person there?
Those inspectors are involved once the new unit is set in place and before occupancy can take place.
But what, that demolition permit, they didn't carry it down, put it in the dumpster, they pulled it out of there?
The gentleman that came in that day to pull those permits had a huge, he had to park on the road. And I'm no expert and I can't say this is definitive, but it appeared to me that they pull the unit onto this huge trailer and they drive away.
Or did they put the wheels on?
Did they bring the trailer right here to the hall?
No, he was on his way to do it. He was pulling the permits to be able to go do it.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's kind of.
So really it involved making sure the site was left in a kind of a passable condition for the next trailer and for the appearance of the pump.
Yes, and Kurt is concerned about public safety. Once the unit is pulled out, if there's any deep ruts or standing water or broken concrete.
Wouldn't the park be liable for it?
It would be, but Kurt was concerned about public safety.
Oh, they're the ones that are paying for the permit. It's not the people moving in and out of the park.
It's the park, not the.
Yeah. It's not, it's not the, they're preparing the site.
Well, the material is still reaching in their pocket, but for more money, was not much resolved for what to pay for, might.
Well, it's making the site safe for somebody to come back in and then the mechanical and electrical people to go back in and hook up. It's just securing the site and making sure that you can do that. And the site is safe from, as you say, concrete, ruts, water, all of that sort of thing that might affect the neighborhood.
But the road could be in that same condition, unsafe, every month.
I had some concerns like Jen sort of raising it. I looked at it anyway. It seems like it is quite gone all across the state. They have a set of permits for moving the trailer. It's not on, apparently the owners know that routine doesn't make sense.
What we have to do?
I have reservations about all these kind of new inspections and new requirements.
Yeah, we have no resistance from.
Yeah, you obviously understand that something's gone all across the state there.
It's to their benefit. If something went wrong, it's their insurance that is going to pay for it.
Sure.
So I think it's to their benefit. And if they had no qualms about it and were securing their site and saying that it's safe enough for a new mobile home to be erected there, brought in there, then all is well that ends well. But it should be uniform across the board. Well, that was, you have to have a policy.
The work is the same, whether it's a permit for demolition, any other permit, we charge $125 for the work that we do at the desk. Doesn't come to us, of course, but.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Good work, yeah.
How would you like the motion word?
Okay. Okay, a motion that we, for demolition building for administrative fee of $125 and $75 per inspection.
I saw one.
Okay, you have support.
I'll support.
We have demolition support. They have for demolition building, $125 administrative fee and $75 per inspection. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If we could have waited, we would have. And he was on his way with the trailer to pull it off. And I wasn't going to lay down in front of the truck seeing this stuff.
Now, Remedy, Remedy, how Remedy?
I know, but I am.
Remedy, how Remedy, thank you for that. Okay, the next one is our assessor needs another vertical file cabinet. There's three on here. Shelley, our assessor, told me one would work. The last one, U-line, is the less expensive one.
It has to be fireproof?
Yes, fire resistant.
Mm-hmm. What about waterproof? I think it, fireproof and waterproof are four.
Waterproof would be nice.
The first two are waterproof.
Since the assessor records had to be preserved at all costs.
Okay.
So that's protection, what's that mean? Gina just brought up that the first two do say with water seal. And the U-line one does not say water seal. Oh, wait a minute, it says impact explosion and water resistant. It does, oh, it does say.
Okay.
And you do free shipping. That's important. Yes, both of these, I don't know who's going to drag it in here.
Yeah, free shipping on the first two. The second one, U-line, there is a shipping cost there.
It's actually not that bad for a heavy cabinet.
Yeah, and they'll bring it right here, they'll move it right into the building. They'll place it right in.
I was going to say they'll put it right where she wants it, so. But that's perfect.
Yeah.
And I know Callie did some research trying to find some used ones.
Yeah, I went out to a cow field. There were a couple. There were a couple.
A cow field?
There is. That's where they were.
Cows keep records?
They look like how much cows had. Well, they were free, but like, wait, they passed the manure smell.
And then, and then how you going to get it?
I was like, yeah. I've used up all my fairs for the year, so.
Yeah.
I think I'd like to do the Phoenix safe with the free shipping and the water seal. Wait a minute, the 25-inch was fine. I can really need the 31-inch, I don't believe. So I would double check with Shelley that this is fine, but we could probably go with the 26-49 price. That's expensive enough as it is, but it's very necessary.
You didn't like the U-line one?
I'll support you. Do you want a not to exceed limits or you can change your mind?
Yeah, yes.
But we have a not to exceed limit. So $3,500 for an appropriate file cabinet for the assessor, it's really important.
Okay, so I'll ask Shelley on Monday which one she.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on it. You talked about it. Yes. Thank you, Dan. That's very, that's, that's kind of you. You're so kind to print out. I support your motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise a $3,500 I would exceed a mount purchase an appropriately safe and fireproofed one for the back end for assessment or something.
Okay, we have support for Callie. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, a lateral file cabinet for the building department.
No, this is.
No, this is the next.
I'm sorry, about what?
Yeah. Another file cabinet for the building department. They need one for the planning commission, another for the file cabinet. Okay, the one that's presented from U-line is $1,310. It's for two inches wide by four tanning color.
And that will work for you?
I'm sorry?
That will work for you?
Yeah, and I believe it's very similar to the other, the one we got right now.
It looks like it.
But we finally have been able to relocate to where I originally started. We have expanded the office. It's been repainted, the carpet was cleaned. It's wonderful. So we really have room with this additional cabinet to have fires secured and not laying over the place.
That's always a good thing. And so the total for this is $1,473 in purchases.
That's true.
And a motion to purchase that for.
After.
Okay, we have motion support to purchase the lateral file cabinet for the building department for $1,473 and 36 cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Steven, yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Item H. I put before the board here a resolution, 2025-07, resolution authorization for Michigan Department National Resource Passport Grant. This is a grant here, okay. On here would be a passport grant. A passport grant is when, when you get your license and get your tabs, you, let's say you check passport to get into state parks and VNR facilities, those monies like that go into a fund that help develop parks and recreational spaces. We've applied for a couple of these that we've used to do the first two phases of the park. What I'm bringing before the board here is a resolution here to start a playground at the park. The amount of the, okay. Okay, on here is that Casco Township, Sinclair County hereby authorizes submission of Recreation Passport Grant Program application for $140,000 project cost, meaning available to financial obligation of $35,000, which is 25% of the cost of this. So a passport grant is a reimbursement thing. We would pay the cost upfront and then the state, the VNR would reimburse us on this. And for $140,000, let's say if we approve it tonight, and the next thing we do, we have to submit by 1 April. They would let us go to VNR in December whether we were successful in obtaining the grant. That's true. It goes to design. And then with our park planner would work with us on how would we want this playground? And two, then after that, we'd have up to two years for construction of this. Any questions?
Okay, so we're putting up $140,000?
Yeah, and then we will get reimbursed.
Oh, except $35,000?
That's right.
Okay.
So.
Any costs someone wants to apply for this?
We'd apply without any cost. I mean, we, the next argument, the agenda would be support from Pam Blough's team. to actually help us build up the grant.
So what are the additional administrative costs?
Okay, well, the next, the next one would be not to exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars.
So an additional four thousand from us.
That's right.
Just to get the application.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have a hundred and forty grand to put up for this? I know we're gonna get reimbursed, but do we have it?
Yeah, well, right now, what we got in reimbursements from our first passport grants. That's the only thing I'm nervous about. Working with the DNR is glacial. Trying to get with our.
So say we don't get those back in time, where did we get the money from to do the hundred and forty? If you have, if we have to put the money upfront, I understand we're gonna get reimbursed for something back or some of it, but where does that come from if we don't get reimbursed?
Well, if we don't, I mean, parks are right. I mean, I don't know. We'd have to general fund like.
No, we're not.
We could delay this year till give our full reimbursement back.
I mean, do we have to?
We have to delay it a whole year.
We have. Two hundred and some thousand dollars in parks right now.
So we could.
Yes, we could.
We have enough to front.
And how much reimbursement do we have?
We got, I think, the first round reimbursement, so there's about four other rounds of reimbursement.
How much? I'm waiting on this. What's the next?
I don't have that exactly figured right now, but I can get it. I.
I mean, does it go any distance to getting us to this point of affording this thing?
We have enough money in the checkbook for the park and rec at the moment.
To do this.
To do a hundred and forty thousand.
And there should be more after.
And there's more and more we get reimbursed.
And what's nice about this, this will be a single passport grant. We're not dealing two alone due one project, which was complicated. That's where I wanna get with the, our, our grant coordinator, Lansing, to say, hey, we might do in this way that we get the full amount back that we deserve, but trying to couple it better and, yeah, well, there is. Near.
I guess I would move that we go ahead with this, particularly that we don't have any burden on the general fund to do this. Whereas if it happens, that we don't get all back that we already expected, but we still have enough to cover. And I suspect we can terminate the process if we end up having a problem.
Yeah.
At any time.
We can.
So I, so I think we should go for.
That would be important.
Then if we have to cut it. I don't think we'll go.
Any other questions? Okay, will you make a motion? Okay. All right, we have a motion to, to.
Adopt.
Adopt. Resolution two thousand, twenty-five dash zero seven. Resolution of authorization, Michigan Department National Resource Passport Grant Program. We have support.
I'll support.
We have a motion support. Okay. On here, do we, we'll call both? Yeah, we'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
And at this point, we're doing this risking four thousand bucks, basically.
Yeah. Okay.
We're out there. That's it. I mean, we have.
Still agree.
Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, the next one, it would be proposal for Belvidere Park, Michigan Department National Resources Passport Grant Application Assistance. This was Pam's team. They prepared the grant for us. They put in all the information. I have to physically approve some of the things out. They'll ask me to do, I'll go out to the local, different communities in support groups and ask for letters of support. Well, I did that with two other grant, updated for grants for all their things. They're applying for grants. I wrote a letter, a grant foundation or something.
Do you have to do that again?
Yeah.
You're gonna do that before April first?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll hit, there's, I'll hit those surrounding townships, Saint Clair County Parks and Rec, friends of the Saint Clair River. Yeah, they're all good. They have, so.
You know, all the children, it ran once thus far for that lot. Couple hundred thousand there?
Um, not that. I mean, we're.
Well, they bought it. They, they helped buy it.
Right.
They had some money.
Yeah.
Hang on, approximately?
Well, we bought it. It was about two hundred thousand dollars. We got that through the trust fund. And then we developed things one and two with two passport grants, which were in the process of.
And how much were they about?
Um, they were about, about four hundred thousand total.
So we really have about six hundred thousand dollars remaining from the state.
Yeah.
Is that even true?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just think, you know, it's nice to know where it's really at.
Yeah.
And, you know, we spent a lot of money too, it seems, but we've got a lot.
You better do it before those, the forty-five, twelve mil.
What was that?
You better do it before Dallas, for Eli comes to forty-five, twelve mil.
You better go visit Lansing first.
If Mr. Must plot to come and enjoy the park, he's free. Anybody gets it? Okay, all right, the next one, this was, okay, proposal for grant application assistance, not to exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars. This is item I.
I want your motion to that to go ahead.
Okay, we have support.
Support.
We have motion support to approve the proposal for Belvidere Park Passport Grant Application Assistance to not exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars. Okay, we'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven Chess.
Still agree.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, item J, Township Easter egg. Jennifer, do you have a thing?
Sure. So my friend Barb and I have this little idea of when we were doing the election that we might wanna do an Easter egg hunt for the children of the community. So we're, we haven't set a date. We were thinking either, I put on here the fifth or the twelfth of April, but possibly the Saturday before that, which would be March twenty-eighth, maybe, something like that. So one of those. And we would need to buy the little plastic Easter eggs, get some candy and little fun toy things to put in there. Have some refreshments, some little goodie bags for them to take.
You were thinking about it right in the middle.
We haven't really talked about it. We could do it at the park if you're gonna go check to see how wet it is.
Yeah, but the problem is only this time of year.
I think we should just probably do it. So probably here, yeah.
If they had it something in the summer and fall, it'd be perfect over there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Can you volunteer? Oh, no, the county just changed Easter.
Yeah, right.
Tell the moon, because it's all based on the.
But I thought it'd be kinda fun to, you know, start getting involved and have kids up here to do stuff for Christmas if we possibly can, but just something fun. I don't know what the turnout will be, but. So if, if you guys could give me, I, I think we could keep the cost under five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I'm in motion to authorize the cost up to five hundred dollars for our Easter egg.
I'll support. Thank you.
Okay, okay, we have motion support to authorize five hundred dollars for the Easter, for children. Here's the township hall. Okay, we have motion support. We'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven Chess.
Still agree.
I'm going to have a bunny.
Yes.
I heard that, I heard there's one of our residents might be. I just asked him because he wasn't here. I said, you're two people, bunny.
All right, we have citizens comment to hear, does anybody?
I have a question here. Last month's building, you got, what is it, credential and there was another item, I think, there's one also. What was it? There was one that was credential and the other one was franking.
Capital funds?
Yeah.
That's our, our retirement.
Right, my question is, what, who's all eligible for this retirement?
I'm a full-time employee, so.
I am.
Yeah. Does your employee handbook, if I, when you were hired in, did you get a handbook from the township?
No.
Are they available?
We have one that's, it's, it's old and needs to get updated.
They what?
It's old and needs to get updated.
When will it be updated?
Uh, it's a work in progress. We, we kinda updated it, but there were some things that we had to put on hold, so. It, it can be done, but it has to come before the board.
Right, I mean, this has been going on for some time. It's a retirement package, right?
Well, the retirement, the, that's, that was set in effect in the late seventies. I think it was seventy-eight.
I, I don't know that I started to, I don't know when I started to get it when I first began.
What, is that all based on years of service or merit or what?
Generally, you have to be for a year.
Yeah.
But I think it's based on percentage of salary.
Yeah.
It's based on percentage of salary.
Years of year, years of service?
No, I don't think it's. Percentage of salary.
Huh? Salary?
Yeah, just a percentage of whatever salary you employ.
Some years of service.
Set to the.
Right. Right, you don't.
You know, when I first started, because I remember when that first started and we, we partnered with Marshall. And then.
Richard, what do you mean? When you say Marshall, Richard?
Yes, remember. And then his daughter, Christine Nanny, is that her name? She, she had her own business.
Right.
With, and then Mr. Kyle Jobin and they're up on.
Grass, Grasshut Avenue.
But I was here a few years before that.
Yeah, it's basically.
It's not been twenty-four, it's not been twenty-four years that I've been here. No, it's not been that long.
Okay, Jim, any other questions?
Well, I go on, we move to a statement. Does all the townships have this package?
Oh, they do. They have.
A lot of townships have. I have St. Michael, Denso, Vision, Purman Kay.
Yeah.
For a twenty-foot over a week job, just not to slam the money.
Well, I don't know.
Plus the holidays.
I don't know if they work, but I also know that not every elected official in the bigger townships actually does the job they're elected to do. They have accountants and CPAs and attorneys and whatever. They're kind of figurehead, but they still get the medical and the retirement, things like that. We're pretty small teams compared to that.
But on the salary, I don't know, you gotta know in percentages for your pension.
I think it's fifteen percent.
I get about, for twenty pleasures, about five hundred dollars a year.
Right, a hundred thousand, like fifteen thousand.
But I didn't ever do it for this. I never do it. I don't know at all.
And one more question, just as a comment. Are there any townships in Saint Clair County that is non-zone?
Non-zone?
Yeah, they don't have a zoning ordinance.
No, I don't, I don't know, Jim. We're all zoned. Yeah, it's required in my state.
I, I have heard of it.
I ain't thinking timber, but I'm not sure.
No, I, I don't.
No, Jim, all townships in Michigan have to be zoned.
We, we have, I have, I'm, one more question. When township, when Casco become a zoned community, what exact date was it? You should have.
It's on the ordinance.
I think it's on the zoning.
It's nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah, well, that's our current zoning ordinance, but they had some ordinances before that. I don't know when it officially become a zoned community. I remember seeing those signs up in earlier.
Right, but I'm saying probably gestern's time.
I mean, almost guessing the.
Was that ordered on by the people or the townships or?
We would, we'd have to look through the, the minutes.
Right.
I don't think anyone made it where everybody had it.
But the current zoning ordinance that we go by was stood up in nineteen eighty-one. But yeah, Casco Township's got a zoning ordinance.
Right. Just a question.
Anything else?
No, I'm, something off my mind. Okay, use your destiny. Okay, one more question. On your amendments to zoning laws in Casco Township, who dreams them up or where do you get them?
Amendment to the plan.
Huh?
Usually the plan advises us.
Right, I mean, because you periodically put an amendment into something zoning law.
Come through the planning commission, I believe. It recommends to the board and the board adopts.
Right, sometimes, Jim. No, we'll see, like, let's say there's part of the amendment that, zoning amendment that doesn't make sense or can't update it.
That's about ninety percent of the zoning.
We'll have our plan work on.
I don't get a G B A.
They, they update it. A lot of times they'll look at other communities, what they're doing, what's working right. They'll post modified language for planning commission. And the planning commission, if they like it, will vote on it and then.
Do an amendment to something.
Yeah, they'll just amend it and then they'll send it up to the township board for our approval. But it's always the township board has final approval on amendments to the, the zoning.
One more question.
Your public hearings are those things?
What's that?
Aren't they generally public hearings?
Yes.
Residents to have.
Absolutely, and that's going to the planning commission level.
But the original, this is my last question, when the original zoning amendment, Casco Township, it wasn't built from scratch. It must have had a package that somebody gave them and you add it on into the future, right? Who, they must have had a base plan, probably from the county or Lansing. I don't know.
I don't think the county.
Huh?
I don't think the county, the furthest I go back, the first year in Arroyo, that was in the eighties.
Yeah, they, they just come, come here too.
But that was the first time, and I've been going to meetings before, but that was the first time that we had old landers.
And life was ever then than this.
It was, it was kind of a shock. Yeah, it was kind of a shock to us. It was necessary, you know. We had, we had Grashut commercial corridor and twenty-six mile road and industrial corridor. And then we had to decide on lot sizes in agricultural and residential. And first, when Arroyo set up a lot of that.
They think we're gonna be an metropolis.
Well, actually, no, actually, in the, in the eighties, when doing the planning commission, half of the time on the, on the planning commission, we were pushing against Burchler and Arroyo who came from Gross Point, this and that.
Was that a high school?
This is, yeah, this is rural and we wanna make sure. But, but they also were experts on planning, on things like, I mean, they knew things like, well, if you, if you put in.
They had a dream.
Well, if you put in, let's say, you, you put in a business that has to have a parking lot. Those people know how high the curves have to be, so your car door doesn't.
Or, or.
That's what they do. They're planners. That's what they know. And so our job was to select the ordinances that best fit our rural community and not get carried away to look like.
What I'm saying, Casco was a brush community. The reason I say that is it got all these shooting strips a half mile long. What's the minimum road range you gotta have?
Well, and R one and R two is, well, for R one and R two is a hundred and fifty feet, agriculture is two hundred.
But I said.
The zoning ordinance, the ordinance wanted to affect the year two thousand. I just googled. Yep, it says it became a zoned community with the adoption of its comprehensive zoning ordinance and series of standalone ordinance starting in the year two thousand, continuing with amendments and new ordinances passed.
Just agree with your Google, but.
No, yeah, we were.
They were great.
We were a zoned community in nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
At least. 1981 at least.
Yeah, but for zoning ordinance, it's a long year to sign before.
Yeah.
And we had, and the, and the thing with Burchler and Arroyo that was absolutely wonderful is that we had community meetings of people who came and they would say, what do you wanna see, what don't you wanna see? We had to make sure that people like Teltow weren't driven out of business, they were grandfathered. Um, it was, it was zoning ordinances that did things like, um...
I think we some zoning, but.
Yeah.
Jim, and Teltow's water and sewer, it's just what's gonna happen to a lot of what's happening now. You're seeing farmland broken up into single-family homesites.
A lot.
What's that now?
You're seeing existing farmland or fallow area.
Farms?
Yeah, yeah, being broken up into existing, the single-family homesites.
Right, you got four splits in 10 years or something like that.
I, I wish I had the money to buy up a lot of stuff, I could rent out the farmland and keep the fallow land fallow and, but I don't have that.
That's why I'm suggesting.
We're, Castle Township is what you consider, what we best describe as exurbia. We're a rural area with an easy community distance of a metro area. We're primarily a bedroom community. Um, people who live here, work, live, live here, they work in Detroit metro area.
Right, you mean what?
Yeah.
I can tell you that living on my kitchen window, I'm a person.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, that's just reality, Jim, I mean, if Castle Township was transported further north on the thumb, it'd be a different story.
I mean, San Diego.
Yeah, exactly. That's, yeah. Do I miss home when the Castle Township, when I was a little kid? Absolutely.
Do I?
Do I, I miss the Castle Township when I was a little kid? Absolutely, when I was really little, but things are changing.
But I'm saying, you got all these bowling alleys and shooting lanes, 150 by a half mile deep.
Yeah.
A lot of good property, better like brush or farm, one of the two, or they're horse.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that was set way before, the front is way back in the 70s.
Well, you said 80, what?
Okay.
Burchler said 80. 1981.
I can say 80.
I would say it's 40, so.
I'm looking for that too, because I think when we first moved here, it was zoned.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yes.
In 81, the current zoning ordinance, we have.
I just keep thinking that things were said, things were said in the 60s, because there were businesses here in the 60s that had to be grandfathered when we started schooling on properties.
Because when they were looking for property, you gotta make sure it was in his own, his own.
Yeah.
And, and it was a few years later, then they built our house.
So, I just, I think it was 74, I just wasn't aware of it.
But agricultural is 200 foot?
200 foot, five acres.
Minimum?
Yes, sir.
If you're in that city, a half mile between Buddy and Lindsay, that's agricultural, right? What if a property has some in the two acre section north of the half mile between its next section, right through the township? What does that affect, that's two acres in the north half of the township, right? From this half mile imaginary land between Lindsay and Buddy though. What if a farm has both on that farm? Two acres, 20 acres and 60 acres on the five acre farm?
Yeah, I mean, if you build anything, it would depend on what zoning, let's say if you wanna build a single-family home. Yeah, thanks for coming. It would depend on where you, what zoning district, I mean, let's say, single-family home, you're on the lot size, you'd have a smaller one in the R1 area versus.
Where the actual one is.
Yeah. I think it's two and a half acres in R1 and five acres in R A. Or two acres.
Two acres.
Yeah, two acres, yeah.
North of a half mile imaginary line.
Yeah. That's been like that for many, many years.
I would like to have 100 acres.
Yeah, so, okay.
Anyway, it's enough.
Okay. Does anyone else, okay, Mr. Wolf?
What happened to the quilts that were in the other?
Yeah, some storage up in the thing, there was some, um, um, isn't there some deterioration issues?
No, should be hanging here somewhere.
Can we hang them in here?
Yeah, there's just one.
Are you mostly gonna hang the zoning map?
Yeah, we will, because, um, I got, I, it's funny, I bring that up. Um, we just completed our master plan and I'd like to get new zoning maps for in here, up in the old hall, my office and our conference room. And but we, the old maps don't reflect, I had it tracked down, our old planner still had the files, so he sent them to our current planner, so we should be doing modifications on them. And I'd like to get a book, or back to the gentleman who came before board review, he's cabinet maker, and here, I'd like to get one with like a dark frame with the court board on it, so we could put the headguns, it'll give something.
And quotes and shades and other things, it's my.
And a flag.
Yeah, definitely, that's terrible.
And my other question is, what's the clerk and the treasurer's assistants, you do not?
He should. For the help of the township and the future leadership.
Do you have job descriptions? Is that how you decide to give trustees things to do, is that written anywhere?
Yes, there's standards where you need to use the elective officials there.
Are those official?
Responsibilities.
I mean, because you sit there by yourself all the time. And I know you've got other meetings and you're just that, and you just that you, you trip off some things to the other trustee.
I, I get support from the, everyone here at the township, I need help, they are willing to help, I have never.
We need a lot too.
They do, yeah.
You're right. It just seems there's a lot on your shoulders without an official designation of.
Everybody knows who does what. We have fiduciary responsibilities that are outlined by the state of Michigan, not only for the offices, but then our office designates what our deputies do.
I think that's forced and deputy, he's, it's optional. I've been urging him to find a private deputy to help broaden the leadership for the future and also provide for a situation where he might not be available.
Correct.
I mean, has that been happened to any of us? So I've been urging him to try to find a deputy that would, he could help, that could help him do his job and also provide broader leadership for the future.
Well, where would a motion have to come from for that position?
You have to look, you have to look for someone who would do the job and do it well.
I get full support from the, the staff here and the other officials at the township, I really, I get.
I would urge anyone who questions the functionality of our day-to-day procedures and how our offices are run to spend a day with us. And you will see exactly who does what, who is here and who is not. That will be the answer to any question you have, one day here.
Well.
One day.
I worked a lecture many days.
Six and a half.
Probably not believe, probably, you guys keep it going all day or.
Six and a half.
And he will come in and come in all day and, you know, I need you, I need you, I need you. And it's not, you know, just staff, it's us as residents come in and we need to talk to this person, we need to talk to that, and whatever they're doing, they put it on hold so they can take other things to talk about. We got it. It's a lot of, and it's fun.
We have time.
Yeah.
Well, I, I realize that it seems like, as, you know, the society that you live in, there's more every day that you have to address. And your daily one I noticed that doesn't have an official assistant.
Yeah.
Because, Lisa, give her, give her a copy of the red one, see what everybody's fiduciary responsibilities are, you'd be surprised.
Jennifer only has one, uh, an assistant that's part-time.
But, uh, yeah, like I said, Mr. Wolf, I get full support from everybody here.
Well, I, I would hope so.
Yeah.
That's why we need to close on the wall.
And I, and I do recognize that it's concerning, okay.
And I'm not a specialist, I just push him when I think it's gonna be done.
He really, he really, he really pushes me, believe me.
Will we get a flag up next week?
Well, I haven't a flag up next week. All right.
Is there a problem which is holding it tight?
No.
Okay, all right.
We always gotta flag on the wall.
Okay. Anyone else that, anyone else has a comment? Okay, your comments?
Yes, I have a forecom. Okay, at the, uh, planning commission meeting of February 18th, we talked about the renewable energy ordinance and it's going to public hearing. I don't know if that's been set up yet or not.
It has not.
No?
It has not, there is yet in your packets, as you'll see, another yet.
Okay, okay. Because we talked about that and we talked about it a lot.
Yeah, you're gonna talk about it again.
I'm sure we will. And, and you know, with, with what's going on in Canada, you know, our renewable energy, might have to out the sound, maybe have some lectures doing here, you know?
Okay, anything else?
Although he did, he did deny, um, no, that's it.
Mr. Anderson?
Of course. So, I would like to share, I got an email today that, it was from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Um, Dear Jennifer Anderson, CMC, on behalf of the board of directors, it is my pleasure to inform you that you have been awarded the International Institute of Municipal Clerks designation of certified municipal clerk. The II MC grants the CMC designation only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community and state. In light of the speed and drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. We applaud your educational accomplishments and achievement of this milestone and congratulate you on your personal pursuit of professional excellence.
Very good.
You should have told me, I could have taken ice cream, yeah.
We can do that tomorrow. Our next one.
Okay, Dana, come in.
We'll be waiting for tomorrow.
Colleen, do you have anything? Okay, I have, um, three things. First of all, the annual road tour will take place at 9:00 AM Tuesday, April 26th.
On my head.
Okay, so you can meet our new area foreman, Dan Ingalls, he's doing a good job. He's picked up from Lake and he's doing a good job. We're gonna have a park cleanup, um, the park director, we met, um, last week and we're gonna have a park cleanup on Saturday at 10:00 AM on Saturday, April 26, 2005. Focus a lot on the trail and down to the river, there's still some stuff that's been there through years. Last thing, we have the Richmond Legislative Breakfast, this is on Tuesday, um, March 18th, at 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, up there at Maniachi's. The cost is $30 per person. I think it's important that we, I'm gonna go, I think it's important that the township is represented there. Who would like to go?
I'll go.
Okay, you'd like to, could be, Jen, one minute, okay. All right, Colleen, you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
8:00. Look at Colleen, she's gonna go. I take it that, so we're all going?
Yeah.
Good, I'll go. I'll do this.
Okay. Okay, good deal.
I'll put it in my table.
All right, that's it. Okay, um, if there's no other comments, we're out for Germany.
I made a motion to adjourn, ask support.
Ask support to adjourn, now, favor?
Hi.
Motion adjourned.